Welcome to the Duckpin Podcast with your host, Brian Griffiths. And now here's Brian.
Our guest on this week's episode of the Duckpin Podcast is somebody who's been involved with conservative politics here in Anarundel County for quite a long time now. Don't let his age fool you with his political experience. He also happens to be my county councilman on the Anarundel County Council. Joining us tonight is Councilman Nathan Volkey. Nathan, it's good to see you, buddy.
Hi, Brian. Good evening and thanks for having me on the Duckpin.
Yeah, thanks for, uh, thanks for, for being on this week's show. You recently announced a, an exploratory committee for, uh, to run, potentially run for county executive. We'll get to that in a minute. Uh, but first I wanted to talk to you about the new restrictions that, um, county executive Stuart Pittman re-implemented on Friday, uh, effective for county buildings, county office buildings here in Anarundel County. That's inclusive of the Arundel Center, which is our government building, as well as senior centers, libraries, et cetera, are all now requiring everybody to be masked regardless of vaccination status. And I just wanted to go ahead and get your, your thoughts on that.
Yeah, I appreciate the question. Um, I think the easiest way to describe it is here we go again, right? We, we went through this last March. The whole discussion was this is a relatively short period. We need to make sure that we are, you know, trying to blunt the curve or flatten the curve is what we heard a lot of, and we had to wear masks. Then we were told, well, we need to keep wearing them a little longer because we're going to get this vaccine. Once we get the vaccine, we won't have to wear masks. Now we've gotten the vaccine. Almost 70% of people in this county have gotten the vaccine, and yet still that's not enough as we get closer and closer to the elusive herd immunity that we were supposed to be touching on as we got the vaccines and as the population moved past the COVID pandemic, uh, as we heard over and over again, here we are again.
Well, let's, let's talk about, um, some of the, the responses to that. You've kind of been one of the leading voices on that, on the county council over the last year or so. What feedback have you gotten particularly recently in light of the county executives, new regulations? What feedback have you gotten from constituents on, on the re-implementation of mask mandates?
Well, I've heard a little bit from constituents about the masks. And I think the question that everybody has is if I got the vaccine and the vaccine works, then why am I still wearing the mask? And I understand that the point, counterpoint on that is, well, the Delta variant is coming out. It's something that, you know, if you wear the mask, it's going to help to ensure that that's not spread. But at this point in time, vaccines are abundant. Anybody who hasn't gotten a vaccine has chosen not to get a vaccine and they've done that. I believe that's their right to choose to do that. And ultimately, if you are going to get COVID at this point and really be unprotected in the sense of not have the vaccine and therefore you're sort of the most vulnerable, that's a choice that you've made. And the idea is, it's interesting. Before, um, there was a lot of talk about people who didn't get the vaccines while they were hurting other people. Now, all of a sudden, the narrative has changed to you're hurting yourselves and we're very worried about you. Uh, so I, I just keep watching this and, and sort of scratching my head, trying to understand who's helping whom and what the idea is with all this. But the bigger thing that I've heard more about than the masks is actually the vaccine policy that the county executive has put in place. This idea that county employees are either going to have to show that they've had a vaccine, or else they will have to prove that they are getting tested on a weekly basis. So this idea is an interesting one in concept that is almost completely unwieldy and unworkable in practice. When I've heard from county employees, the question is, what day of the week am I supposed to get tested? When do I have to prove that I have a negative test result? What is it that is going to qualify as a negative test result? You know, on and on these questions go. And I don't think that these things have been thought through before the county executive and his staff decided to jump right on the coattails of the Biden administration and say, hey, we're going to do that too. That idea, we're right there. We're going to do that.
Do you know yet, have, have anybody from the administration told you yet, who is going to be responsible for bearing the cost of these tests? Is it going to be the taxpayer? Or is it going to be the individual employee themselves?
I haven't heard that yet. I am, I know that the county administration has indicated that county employees can go to county facilities and get tested. However, if you start to do the math with 6,700 county employees, if you think that maybe 70%, if they mirror the population have already been vaccinated, if you start to do the math off of that, and you think maybe you've got a little under 2,000 people who are going to need to be tested on a regular basis, I'm not sure how much capacity, in addition to other testing that's already being done, the health department's going to have for that. And the costs, that, that usually is about the last thing that this administration worries about.
Isn't, isn't that the truth? It's one of the reasons why, um, back during the general assembly session, the, uh, county executives was pushing a, um, a devolution of the transfer tax authority from the House of Delegates and the, and the state senate down to the county council level. Now, all of this was being done, of course, so that the county executive to try to push through with the democratic majority, a tax increase on transfer taxes, particularly of, um, well, he says it was for properties over $1 million in cost. We know how this administration likes to raise taxes on working people. So we know it will be happening, happening shortly thereafter. Um, and your discussions on the county council and with your colleagues and with the administration, um, about that bill, what exactly, what, what sense did you get that the administration was really searching for ways to help balance the county budget? Or did this seem more like just another, uh, tax and spend power grab from a, from a democratic executive?
Well, what I'll tell you is that those conversations, at least from my end, have not really occurred with my colleagues. And the reason is bill didn't pass. So it didn't actually come to us to have to then implement out of state law. That being said, I would say about this administration, on this particular topic, they have continually tried to find ways to push through more affordable housing in Anarundel County. That has been about the only type of development that they've been interested in seeing. And so when you ask the question, is this just a sort of a money grab? Or is this actually intended, um, to do something that they believe in, but that may be ill-intentioned and, and ill-advised? Um, yeah, that's the case. To me, I don't think that they were doing it just to raise revenue. I do think they believe in this concept and they do think that if they create this affordable housing trust and they fund it, that that will actually give them the means to create more affordable housing. The problem is, in this county, we have an affordable housing crisis and it's not because of the fact that people don't want to live here, or that we don't, you know, have enough housing, just kind of generally that's affordable. We don't have enough housing, period. That's the problem we have. There are a lot of people who want to live here and there's just not enough housing. We're seeing that in the real estate market. We've seen it for the last year and a half, which has just been on fire. And so the reality is, any new administration in this county is going to have to have an honest and open conversation with the citizens of this county about what our future is going to look like on development. Do we want it? That's the first question. If so, where do we want it? Or are we willing to accept that with no new development comes a whole host of other issues, um, that, that could be a problem for us? I know a lot of people talk about redevelopment and that's certainly a hot topic and I love to see that wherever we can. I will tell you that I know redevelopment is significantly more expensive than new development, which is one of the reasons that it's pretty hard. You sometimes get sites that already have problems. Um, you have environmental issues that come with sites. You have impervious surface issues that come with sites. And so you can't just walk in and say, aha, let's do more redevelopment. That's the answer. If it was that simple, I promise you, we would have done it by now.
Ain't, ain't that the truth? And one thing, other thing that's not simple on the topic of development, of course, is Plan 2040, the, uh, general development plan for the entire county. Um, I know that looking from the outside, looking in as somebody who has not had an opportunity to spend a lot of time with the general development plan, the administration's plan here seems to be get away from single-family development and start forcing any new development to be multi-unit development, high-density housing. That's problematic for many reasons, environmental reasons. We just saw how, how bad the, uh, how bad a pandemic, an epidemic, uh, pandemic, if you will, um, can spread through high-density areas. We saw that with how much, you know, how New York City was, was devastated. I guess the question that I have here is, how do we kind of stop Anarundel County from continuing this, this path towards frankly, becoming Montgomery County? I think we've all seen the problems that Montgomery County, particularly lower Montgomery County has with far too much development, far too many people living in that space. How do we kind of stop this train before it gets too far out of the station?
Yeah, absolutely. We debated Plan 2040 in front of the council for three months. It was the biggest thing that we did the beginning of the year. Basically February until May, we worked on Plan 2040 and then May until mid-June, we worked on the budget. So we had a pretty marathon, just over five and a half months or so on the council. But turning to Plan 2040 and the question that you had about how do we stop the Montgomery countyization of Anarundel County, that goes back to the point I made before. We have to begin to have a conversation about what we want our county to look like. And that was the problem that I had with Plan 2040. And I won't speak for my Republican colleagues, but I will share that all three of us voted against that plan. And the reason was relatively straightforward from my end. It wasn't a plan. It was a long laundry list of objectives and ideas and concepts that basically took everybody who came to a meeting and who was a stakeholder, it took their idea and threw it in there and it said, that should be part of the calculus. And the problem is that all of those ideas, while certainly worth considering and thinking about, you can't run every sort of plan through every single idea that's ever come out. And so you have to begin to sort of separate them and say, we think this is a more important consideration than this, and this is how we're going to weight it in that calculus. The problem with Plan 2040 was, as you said, growth continues in this county and the county executive is driving growth into certain areas, but he's not being honest about where those areas are. If you look at Plan 2040, you can't possibly read it. And I've read it. It's hundreds of pages long. You can't possibly read it and walk away and say, I know where the growth is going to go. I know where the development's going to go. But what it does clearly say is that this county is going to keep growing, that we're going to need, I'm forgetting the exact number, but I believe it was around 28,000 additional housing units that we're going to need in the next two decades in this county. Where are they going to go? Why was that not identified in the plan clearly to say, these are the target areas for where we see growth happening in the county and let people understand what their community is going to look like and have that real honest conversation? Without that, what we've done is passed a plan that makes everybody feel good. And we think we're touching on all of these major milestones of, you know, environmental sustainability and community input, all these different things. But we've never actually shown anybody the plan. We've never shown them where the growth and the development is going to go. And mark my words, it's coming and it will happen. So we need to have that conversation where people know this is what I can expect in my community.
I think we should put all the, uh, high-density development on Doden Farm down there where Pittman lives, but that just may, uh, I may be one of the few people who find that amusing. I know that the county executive would definitely not find that amusing, but it would give him a taste of his own medicine. Um, you talked about the budget process and, uh, and how it relates into all of this. And of course, one of the things that is a hot topic every year is school funding. Um, particularly, you know, the Board of Education, they want, they want more money every year. And, uh, between the ever-growing state requirements, between, um, you know, the Thornton Commission in the past, the Kerwin Commission that's coming down the pike with the maintenance of effort requirements, you know, it ain't cheap funding our, our county schools. And, and you, you know, you guys are given the county executive's budget with the Board of Education's request, which I believe is $1.7 billion this year, um, give or take a few dollars. And, you know, they, they ultimately wind up getting what they want. How as a county councilman, or how could as an administration work effectively with Riva Road, the Board of Education, to try to keep down costs, especially, um, considering between COVID and the Kerwin Commission, we don't know what schools are going to look like five, 10 years from now. How do we rein in the cost of county education to taxpayers?
Well, one thing that you said about the $1.7 billion budget, so that's their all-in budget, right? That comes from all sources, state, local, federal. When you look at the actual contribution from the county, we're about $800 million to them. Um, and that's of our, well, that's just, I believe on the operating side. That's not even the capital kick in. But when you look at the total county budget, we're about, last year's budget was 1.87 billion. So it's a significant amount, really. And I, I may have the numbers on the school a little off because I know they're about 51% of the budget is where they wind up. The way to do it, to effectively work with Riva Road is a couple of things. One, this administration and the last administration, when you look at the funding levels that they provided to the Board of Education, they are not significantly different. And that's one of the most interesting things when you really drill down into the budget, you see how much money the last administration put into schools and how much the current administration is putting in. The current administration put a lot of money in, in year one. And then in year two, they didn't put nearly as much money in because that was the COVID budget. And so there were concerns about how much they put in. And then this year they put in less than what the Board of Education was asking for. Candidly, what the Board of Education was asking for was outrageous. There was no way the county was going to be able to fund that. That being said, there is a, there is a path forward and that path forward is sitting down with the superintendent and saying, what are your priorities? What are the most important things that we can fund that are going to make a direct impact on student success? What can we do there? And working on those things? That's been done before. This is not something that's never happened in the history of the county. It has. It's happened many times. Ultimately, this county executive very early on made a decision, uh, that he was going to work lockstep, not necessarily with the Board of Ed or the superintendent, with the teachers' union. And the teachers' union has in large measure called the shots on what has been funded in the budgets to the Board of Ed, Education. Uh, and they've had a lot of impact, both on the county council side, with the county executive, and also with the elected Board of Education members, that has given them a disparate amount of, uh, voice in terms of those discussions. So I think that one of the things that needs to happen is step back and a little more work between the superintendent and some of the people who understand how we can move these metrics and move these numbers for students without just sort of plowing more money into whatever it is the teachers' union is asking for.
Well, let's kind of get to the point. Let's get to the main event now. We know everybody tuned in to talk about, um, you know, back in June, the end of June, you announced that, um, you had formed an exploratory committee that you were looking at running for, for county executive. Um, obviously you're a first-term council member. Uh, several other Republicans are already in the race, but you decided that you were going to explore, you know, to explore, run yourself. What made you decide that you may be interested in, uh, seeking the fourth floor at Arundel Center and become our county executive?
Sure. I appreciate the question. So as you know, the county council, while it's my first elected position, my first time as a, as an elected official, I've been involved in Republican politics for a lot of years before that. And so for me, I've always been a party builder and that's been my main objective. Uh, in 2014, I was running the county party here in Anarundel County when we elected Governor Hogan for the first time. In 2016, I was running the county party when President Trump was elected for the first time. So what I bring to the table that I think other candidates, um, may not bring in the same measure is the fact that I'm a real Republican. I have been somebody who's been in the trenches, working for Republicans over and over again. And candidly, one thing that happened in February on the county council that really solidified for me, the need for people I believe like me to be in these positions is a resolution known as Resolution 5-21, which was the resolution about the January 6th events, uh, that happened to the Capitol. And in that resolution, it called for President Trump to be permanently disqualified from ever holding office again, because as the resolution noted, um, he, it claimed that he started a riot. It claimed that he had lied about the election results and it claimed that he was at fault for everything that happened on January the 6th. And that led to the conclusion that he should be permanently disqualified. Now, to me, I felt like that wasn't why I was elected. I wasn't put in this position to decide the qualifications of a president. That wasn't why you picked me to be your county councilperson. And so I thought it was wholly inappropriate. In addition, I thought there were some things in the resolution I agreed with, and there were some I just completely disagreed with and thought were outrageous that anybody would ever say. And when one of my Republican colleagues voted with the Democrats for that resolution, it was sort of eye-opening to me to say, hmm, maybe there are some real differences between us. On top of that, I've been somebody who's a real conservative. So I've been fighting against illegal immigration in this county. I fought the fight to keep 287G when this county executive came in and immediately tried to get rid of it as his, one of the first things he did in office. I've fought against every tax increase that's come in front of the county council. I've fought against the outrageous styrofoam ban, which has increased costs for small businesses. I've fought against unreasonable regulations on short-term rentals. I have stood up for all manner of conservative principles that have, that have come up in front of our council. Um, and so I think that people deserve somebody who's a real conservative. I also think that while it doesn't really come in front of the council much, uh, the issues of life and the issues of the second amendment are something that people know where I stand on those. And I'm very willing to tell people where I stand on that because I think you deserve to know, even if it doesn't come in front of the council, to a certain degree, Republican primary voters want to know where you stand on those issues. And I'm more than willing to share that with people. Um, and the most important thing to me, the most important reason why I've considered doing this position is that I have real roots in this county. For me, I'm a third generation Anarundel County resident. I went to school here. I'm a product of our public schools. I have chosen to raise my family here. Uh, most of my family does actually live here in the county too. And for me, it, it's important what this county looks like 10, 15, 20, 30, 50 years from now, because I'll be here and I expect my kids will be here too, maybe even my grandkids. And so that matters. And that's one of the things that I'm most concerned about. So for those reasons, real Republican, real conservative with real roots in this community, I think that I'm actually the Republican candidate who could best move forward with the Republican message in a general election against Stuart Pittman.
Well, let's, let me ask you one of the questions about if you do run for county executive.
Sure.
Um, and you know, and if you are elected, and we've taught, we hit on spending a little bit earlier, but I wanted to, to kind of refocus on that first thing. Cause obviously, um, the county executive introduces the county budget. So what the county executive and, and, and his or her department heads have a lot of influence over what gets proposed in the budget and what of course ultimately gets funded. Where would you find some of the efficiencies in the county budget? How would you, looking through, you know, you spent time with the county budget as a county councilman before. So you probably more than a lot of people know the intricacies, the ins and outs of that budget more than, than an average civilian would, for example. Where are some of the efficiencies? Where are some of the things that you could cut from the budget in order to reduce spending and try to get some more of that money back to county taxpayers?
Yeah. So I have spent a lot of time with the budget. Um, every year, me and my Republican colleagues dig through the budget in an effort to try to find where are those savings? And every year, the auditor makes recommendations. So we have year after year, put up all of the auditor's recommended cuts and said, these are things that are just pretty basic savings measures that we should be able to pass. And some of them do pass and others don't. And it's a little surprising. That's one place to start looking. I can tell you that the county has seen a large growth in staffing and personnel costs are basically the biggest cost in the county budget. If you look at it, about 80% of what we're funding is personnel. Um, it's interesting. If, if you want to be county executive, you better enjoy personnel issues because that is a huge part of the job. You are in, in many ways, the head of a very large corporation with a lot of personnel and HR issues. So that's, the job may seem very glamorous in other ways, but that's a huge piece of what the county exec does day in and day out. With that said, those new positions that have been funded, amazingly, every year, when we get requests for new positions, we on the council will say, what is your vacancy rate? So you claim that you need more positions. How many positions do you have open? We've had departments come in asking for, last year, for instance, one department, I, I won't say specifically who, but they were asking for about five new positions. Their vacancy rate was nearly 50%. It's like, well, what are you asking for more positions for if you can't fill the positions you already have? This is one of the issues that we have across the county budget, is this idea of grow, 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 more, 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 give us more positions, what we refer to as pins, um, the employee ID numbers, basically. But we're not necessarily filling the positions we already have. So that's one place to look. On top of that, there are a number of parts of the county budget where we have created structural deficits to try to then fund other things. So last year, there was a $37 million structural budget deficit that was created by the county executive's budget. And the reason for that was they used a lot of one-time money, or what's called fund balance, to then increase and do new projects on top of what they were already doing. So that's a way right there to use extra money that's left over, that now you apply to existing revenue source or, um, excuse me, expense streams that you have. And then you're not necessarily growing the budget, but you're actually using the money more efficiently because you're funding positions that are already there with money that you have as opposed to using the money to fund new things while you still have to make up the additional revenue to backfill those things you already have.
Yeah, people, people think that all, that governing's easy. And then, you know, everybody, everybody's an expert on Facebook. And then we talk about something like that and people realize how hard the actual gob, job of, uh, job of governing really can be. I mentioned a lot of things so far in this interview. What is one issue that you find to be an important issue that's facing Anarundel County that I have not brought up yet?
Well, I'm going to give you two, if that's all right.
That's perfectly fine.
Yeah. The first one that I would say to you is critical race theory, which is all over the news nationally. And I actually put in an amendment to the budget this year that would have banned the teaching of critical race theory. And the way that it was defined is pretty innocuous. When you actually look at the ideas of critical race theory and what they're advancing and what I was trying to stop, it was effectively a non-discrimination bill. It was, it was effectively saying, we're not going to treat anybody as inferior or superior to another person. You know, we're going to level everybody out. We're not going to say that you, by virtue of your gender, race, whatever it may be, are responsible for things that were done by other people of your gender, race, et cetera, at some other point in history, which is outrageous, the idea that somehow you're responsible for other people's actions. Ultimately, that amendment to the budget failed on a three to four vote with the three Republicans in favor and the four Democrats against. I will be putting that back up again in September when we start meeting again as a council, because to me, the county should take that policy. The county should be non-discriminatory in how we spend county funds and how we train and educate our county workforce. So I intend to put that back up. Um, and I know that there are a lot of people who say, critical race theory means this, or it means that. Okay, take that word away for a moment and look at the actual substance of the bill that I'm going to put in. It is non-discrimination. It should be as simple as everybody going, yes, that's exactly what we need to do. So that's the first issue. The second is crime. We are seeing a lot of crime come in and it's especially happening in northern Anarundel County with our border next to Baltimore City. We're seeing crime bleed over and that's coming from sources, basically where there is unchecked, uh, crime prevention and, and crime efforts in Baltimore City. And so we get the bleed of that. And that is one of the issues that I think we have got to really tackle and confront. And I'm not seeing this administration do a whole lot on that. It's very concerning to me because I feel like this administration has made Anarundel County less safe, less affordable, and frankly, less friendly for business. And those are three things that we need to be dealing with in any election against county executive Pittman. We need to be talking about how to make this county safer, more affordable. That's often through taxes and through other policies that we've got in this county in terms of fees and costs, which he's increased. And we've got to find ways to be more friendly to business because he's driven so many businesses out with his policies during COVID.
Yeah, definitely. Uh, on that last part, and those, uh, those policies were, were already chugging along before COVID even came through. I mean, you and I have both seen that. One last question before we get you out of here. Um, you obviously would not be the first candidate in this race. Chris John has already announced, Herb McMillan has announced, your council colleague, uh, Jessica Hare, she's announced, um, delegate Sid Saab has thought about running, Kendall Ehrlich, others have, have speculated that they may enter the race. And of course, your name has been out there for a while before you announced your exploratory committee. What makes you different? What makes you a better choice to be the Republican nominee and ultimately the county executive than the other Republicans who have entered or may enter the field?
Well, I come back to those three points that I made earlier. Real Republican, real conservative, real roots in this county. And I think when you look down that list and you look at each of those things, I think it'd be pretty hard for any of these other candidates who are running, who I, many of them I consider friends and I think are, are very good people. Uh, but I think none of them check off all those boxes the way that I do. Um, I have been pretty consistent, actually not pretty consistent, very consistent in my conservative bona fides, if you will, on the county council. I don't think you can find anyone on the council who has been more conservative in their voting record than I have. I'll give you an example. There was an amendment that came up to the general development plan that said, we need to add to a land use document that Anarundel County has a history of slavery and federally financed segregation. Um, not only was I baffled on what that even means, but I also thought this is completely inappropriate, similar to that resolution I mentioned earlier, to add to a land use document when we're looking at how we're going to plan development in our county. So I was the only one on the council to vote against that, saying, this just doesn't make any sense. And I think that kind of common sense, uh, perspective is what differentiates me. By the same token, I think there are some people who think, well, you can't be a strong conservative and be effective. That means that you're just out in the wilderness yelling by yourself. I'd direct anybody to go look at my webpage, nathanvolkey.com. When you look on there, you will see I have a long list of legislative achievements. And amazingly, every single one of them is a bipartisan bill. The reason? Because the county council is four Democrats and three Republicans. If you want to pass a bill, you got to get a Democrat. So for me, I have this record, I believe, that shows I can get things done working with the other side, but I can also stand up and be a strong conservative voice and be somebody who is going to represent this county and what it means to be an Anarundel County native and, and resident. And, and I think that's what differentiates me in a lot of ways.
I know you got a big event coming up here in September. I'm going to give you a second here to, uh, to promote that.
Well, I appreciate that. Yeah. I have a great crab feast. It's going to be my third annual crab feast at Curtis Beach. That's on September the 10th. And if you can make it, it'll be 6:30 to 9:30. It's going to be an, an exciting night. It's going to be a lot of fun. And you really can't beat crabs on the water at Curtis.
County Councilman Nathan Volkey, my county councilman, whichever way you decide, if you decide to run for reelection, if you decide to run for county executive, either way, best of luck to you next year.
Really appreciate it, Brian. Thanks for taking the time to talk.
Thank you.
This has been the Duckpin Podcast. Don't forget to subscribe and download.